Welcome, everyone. My name is Sharon Easterling and I am the co-chair. And sitting next to the other co-chair, Loretta Jemmett, are pleased to welcome you on behalf of the Commission to these really historic hearings on how the city of Philadelphia is going to move forward to provide pre-K for all of our preschool-aged children in the city. So, we are delighted that you're here. And let me just remind you about the work of this Commission. On May 19th, 2015, the creation of the Commission on Universal Pre-Kindergarten passed with overwhelming support in Philadelphia, with more than 80 percent voter approval. The objective of the Commission is to propose a universal pre-kindergarten program that provides high-quality, affordable, and accessible educational services to three- and four-year-olds throughout Philadelphia. The Commission on Universal Pre-Kindergarten shall be guided by the principle that high-quality, early childhood education has the potential to produce lifelong learners who will become contributing citizens. And I especially want to acknowledge and to thank the leadership of our city from Mayor Michael Nutter and the council members who have supported this effort. I also want to acknowledge the presence of two of our council members, Councilman Good and Councilwoman Blackwell. And Councilwoman Blackwell is actually going to make a few remarks.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me say, thank you. We are very, very glad that you're meeting in our wonderful chambers. It's a pleasure to see you and certainly to see Dr. Jemmet again, whose reputation here and beyond and abroad is phenomenal. And we thank all of you. I was just telling Donna that we were in an SEIU kind of action people Comcast people, and they are. Donna Cooper said good things about you. So, it's nice when you're so well-rounded and people know that you know what you're talking about. All the members of the committee, Catherine Blunt, all of you, we say thank you. And I can only say that I know of nothing that is more important than this. Alan Greenberger and all of you know the same. And that is that we keep it going, that we start our children in pre-K, and that we don't waste it thereafter by not making sure that we continue a high-quality education where youngsters learn what is important and learn that we are for them and that learning is important. We're having hearings before the Council Committee on Education that I chair on the 21st at 1:00. Dr. Height will be here, and we invite anyone who would like to testify on this. And our education hearing will be to talk about where we are now from September going forward this year, where we are now and where we think we would like to be. So, again, we invite you all to be there, to testify if you're able to. And again, welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much. So, now I'm going to do the roll call of Commission members, and then we'll formally open the hearing. So, when you hear your name, members of the Commission, just raise your hand or say aye. Councilwoman Blackwell. Catherine Blunt. Miriam Calderon. Diane Casabono. Donna Cooper. Rob Dubow. Jennifer Duffy. Michelle Figler. Michelle sends her regrets, actually. She was called into meetings today, but we'll review the proceedings from today. Vanessa Garrett Harley. Alan Greenberger. Ruben Jones. Cheryl Kimball. Fen Lim. Lisa Nutter. And Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. So, the hearings are formally open.
On behalf of the Commission, I just want to welcome all of you here today. This is a very important and critical process that we're at. This role will determine what we do for our young people in our city of Philadelphia. All of you here today are committed, concerned about our children. Our children, three- and four-year-old children, are our leaders of tomorrow. If we do not do the right thing to prepare them the right way, then we are lost and they are lost. We're here today because we really want to make sure that we hear your voices to try to determine what we should do in the city of Philadelphia for our children. Our children need to be nurtured, they need to be educated, they need to be trained, they need to be prepared for the world that's coming in front of them. They need to be healthy, they need to be smart. And we are here to help that happen, but we cannot do it without you and your input and your voice. So, we're here today to make sure this happens. We appreciate you taking time of your busy schedule to present your thoughts and your concerns regarding the work of the Commission on Universal Pre-K. We know that we are here because we care and we want quality for our children. You know, because not only will they be our leaders, if they're not ready to lead, they won't lead. If they won't be ready to grow, they won't grow. And there are, we want them to be productive citizens for Philadelphia and not just for Philadelphia, for the nation and for the world. And if we can't do that here, then we have done a big disservice. And so, I'm so grateful and honored to be part of this Commission, and we look forward to working with you this evening. Thank you.
So, here's how the testimony will work. Many of you have signed up ahead of time and have submitted your testimony. All of the testimony, the written testimony that's been submitted, will be posted and available for your review on the website. And we are going to call folks up in groups of three to bring their testimony before the Commission members. I'd like to ask that, we want to ensure, we do have a lot of people signed up to speak. So, to ensure that everyone has time, if you could limit your remarks to three minutes. And then, the chairs, of course, will be able to exercise discretion in allotting additional time. And we have a timekeeper who will let you know when you're coming up on your allotted time. So, we're going to begin with those who preregistered and then folks who walked in and got on the rolls. And then, if there's time, at the end, we are happy to hear additional testimony. But we're scheduled to go until 6:00.
Our first presenter will be Kevin Dow from United Way. Our second person is James Waddington from Lockhead Martin and PA Early Learning Investment Commission, and Mark Kehoe from Brightside Academy. These are our first three speakers.
Members of the Commission, other guests, Councilwoman, Councilmen, good to see you. My name is Kevin Dow. I'm Senior Vice President of Impact for the United Way of Greater Philadelphia and Southern New Jersey. Shared prosperity, the city's plan to reduce poverty, provides the guideposts and clear action steps for addressing critical issues in the city such as workforce development, housing security or insecurity, financial stability, early learning, and benefit access. A running start, which was unveiled in June 2015, offers the framework for building quality early learning in Philadelphia and demonstrates the city's commitment to ensuring children in our city have access to quality early learning from the time they are born through age five. Similarly, at the United Way, we work to ensure children get a quality education from cradle to career, families achieve financial stability, and all community members live healthy lives and have their basic needs met. Early childhood education is the foundation of everything we do. We know that a quality early education is the great equalizer, the experience that can set a child, no matter his or her background, on the path to success. If we can get it right in the first five years, it changes everything. We believe all children should enter kindergarten ready to learn. That's why United Way was an active participant in the mayor's Early Learning Advisory Council, MELAC, which helped shape the city's childcare plan and co-leads, we co-leads, one of the working groups around supply of quality childcare. United Way intends to stay involved and engage as an early childhood education funder, convenor, and program partner as outcomes from a running start begin to materialize and the city moves forward to construct a quality early learning system that can serve all families and children. As you will hear today, we desperately need quality childcare for families and children in our city. In Philadelphia, 63 percent of children live at or near the poverty. This means many of our residents are facing challenges every day which limit their ability to provide the tools to their children to ensure school readiness. This also means that organizations such as United Way, initiatives such as the Universal Pre-Kindergarten, officials from the city, state, and federal government, and institutions like the School District of Philadelphia, PCCY DeVacey, who are all here, must be ready to work collectively to make our children have access to quality early learning programs that prepare them for kindergarten. United Way has been shaping early care and learning in Philadelphia for over 15 years. Our Early to Learn Program, the predecessor to our Success by Six, focused on providing extensive resources to childcare programs to enable them to reach quality. Since 2007, the Success by Six Program has been an anchor early education initiative in Philadelphia by providing childcare centers with intensive technical assistance, program improvement resources, trauma education, training, and peer learning opportunities to achieve higher quality. In Philadelphia, 50 percent of the childcare centers that are Star III or IV are Success by Six programs. Since the program's inception in 2007, there have been 77 childcare centers in Philadelphia serving over 4,600 children that have achieved and sustained the quality rating of key Star III or IV. For the past two years, United Way has been a principal partner in the Pre-K for PA campaign, a statewide advocacy campaign working to ensure all three- and four-year-olds in Pennsylvania have access to publicly-funded quality early education. As a partner in this initiative, we've been able to make funding pre-K a priority in Pennsylvania's last gubernatorial election. And as a result of the Pre-K for PA campaign, all of the candidates for governor in 2014 made funding for pre-kindergarten a key part of their campaign platforms. And I'm proud to say that Governor's trying his best to work it for us today. We know most of our city's policymakers understand the need for quality childcare in Philadelphia. I am also here to testify because I want to clearly convey the significant cost challenges associated with operating high-quality childcare programs. A recent report from the nonprofit Finance Fund spelled out the economic challenges of the business of childcare and showed that childcare providers are barely making ends meet. The central fixed costs of caring for children are not met by early childhood education revenue sources. The primary source of revenue for childcare providers serving low-income families are government subsidies. Given this structure, the NF report shows that childcare providers have a gap, a gap of at least 23 percent for high-quality care. I'm going to bring this to an end. This means that childcare providers who want to be high-quality and serve children with the greatest need and operating at a deficit are barely surviving. We cannot allow this to continue. I urge this Commission on Universal Pre-Kindergarten to develop a plan that allows all three- and four-year-olds in Philadelphia to have access to publicly-funded quality pre-K as stakeholders in early education. And as a community, we must use our collective resources to ensure that all children have access to early quality education, and childcare providers receive adequate resources to provide this care. The city of Philadelphia is now poised to improve the early learning landscape in our city with initiatives like a Running Start and Read by Fourth campaign and the creation of this Commission. Working together, we can make quality childcare a reality for all families in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Next person?
Hi. Good afternoon and thank you. I'm extremely happy to be here today, and I commend the Commission for taking action. My name is Jim Waddington. I am the Director of Strategic Marketing Solutions for Lockhead Martin. I am also a member of the Governor's Early Learning Investment Commission, also known as ELIC. This Commission is a group of 76 business leaders from across the state. 16 of them are from the Philadelphia, Greater Philadelphia region, who know it is important we prepare children with the capabilities and skills required to compete in a growing global economy. Since 90 percent of the human brain is developed by the age of five, our members realize that we miss a critical window by waiting to educate children until they reach kindergarten. If you were interested in seeing who was on our Commission, I provided a list in my testimony today. It's an amazing group of individuals who spend a lot of time and put a lot of effort into this because they have a passion around it, as I do. And I've come to you today to express our collective support for the development of a comprehensive pioneering plan to fund and implement universal, high-quality pre-kindergarten in Philadelphia. You don't need to be a businessperson to tell you that the U.S. is facing changing work demands and that tomorrow's workforce is entering school today. What's interesting is that close to 65 percent of young people will stay right here in the Philadelphia area and become part of our local workforce in less than 20 years. For the next two decades, they will be learning how to think, act, compete, in an increasing competitive global economy. In fact, by 2018, all of the youngest baby boomers will be of retirement age. I got a couple of years to go, but I'm almost there myself, all right? About 76 percent of the boomers will retire, and only about 51 million people are in line to replace them. So, that's a 25 million worker gap. We are particularly vulnerable to this challenge because today's workforce has a need for employees who are well-trained in science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as what we call STEM skills. And it is important, as STEM skills are more than just basic skills that allow adults to work on a team, display leadership, think critically, and to adapt to the changing situations. Those skills, known as executive functional skills, were valued more highly than the applicant's college major by 93 percent of 300 employers surveyed. So, as you can see, it's the social skills as well. Tests measuring different forms of executive function skills indicate that they begin to develop shortly after birth and within, between the ages of three and five being the prime window for opportunity for the most dramatic growth. Research also confirms that the brain is particularly receptive to learning math and logic between the ages of one and four. Business leaders also realize that it is most costly for us as a society to wait to invest. We know that schools districts can save substantial money when children start school ready to learn since schools don't need to invest as much in costly remediation and grade repetition. Children who attend quality earning, quality earning learning programs are up to 48 percent less likely to be placed in special education and 51 percent less likely to be held back in school. They are also far more likely to graduate high school. Without a quality early childhood education, not only will many kids struggle in school, but they will fail to graduate. But they will likely also make bad life decisions that may lead to crime, teen pregnancy, and dependence on governmental programs. On a personal note, my wife was a longtime preschool teacher. My four children are all products of quality earning learning programs. Their successes and the successes of my wife's former students is a testament to the efficiency and greatness of these programs. It is for these reasons, many more, that the ELIC urges the Member of the Commission on Universal Pre-Kindergarten to develop an innovative strategy to increase quality and accessibility of early learning programs in Philadelphia. So, thank you very much for listening to me today. I really appreciate it, and it's my hope your work will help to make Philadelphia a stronger, more vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you, James, and thank you, Kevin. My next speaker is going to be Mark. You ready?
My name is Mark Kehoe. Can you hear me okay? I'm the CEO of Brightside Academy. A little about Brightside. We serve approximately 8,000 children a day at our 65 schools today in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and New York City. We have a workforce of about 1,500 employees total. Specifically, here in Philadelphia, we serve almost 4,000 children at our 27 locations spread out through Philadelphia County. In that 4,000 children, we serve about 600 Head Start children in partnership with the School District, PHMC. Thanks to Natalie. We also provide pre-K counts services through a contract with Ockdale. And I'm proud to announce that 27 of our 27 schools are Star III or Star IV as of yesterday. We're very proud of that work, but there's a lot more work to be done. This is a challenging space that, I'm in a room that we all know, but this is a very difficult space. In addition to Philadelphia, our Pittsburgh, so of our 36 academies in the state of Pennsylvania, 35 are Star III or Star IV. So, we've been working diligently to get there, in addition to Head Start and pre-K counts. In New York City, we're, New York City's, one of their top partners with their expansion in UPK with their four-year-old program. We also have direct Head Start contracts with the Office of Head Start in Ohio. And then, a little about me, I'm still relatively new to the industry. I spent almost 20 years in corporate America working in healthcare. I know that industry a little bit more better. In a short amount of time today, and you have a lot of people here to speak, I have two primary goals. One, to reinforce what we believe the ingredients of success look like to prepare a child. And two, to reinforce, time is your enemy. And I want to start with time. If you've been in early child education, you've heard you have about 1,800 days between a child is born and when they go to school. And those 1,800 days are the most important days of that child's life development. All the science says if they're not prepared, good things don't happen. And you heard some of the statistics today, and we can spend hours talking about the statistics. So, time, if we focus on just waiting one year of five years, that's 20 percent of a life's child, the child's life in preparation. If we're just talking about four-year-olds, we lose a generation of four-year-olds. Time is critical, and time is the one thing that seems to get past us really fast. The other thing that I want to reinforce is that, the ingredients. And so, as you think about what it takes to put a program in place in Philadelphia, the latest research is reinforcing three critical things. And I plead with you to keep those front and center. First and foremost, dosage. The amount of time a child's in this program is critical. We're talking about an intervention. We're talking about taking children who left on their own, statistics say bad things are not, are going to happen. We're intervening, and so the amount of time a child is in the program is critical. And we're talking about six-hour days, not three-hour days. And we're not talking about half-year, we're talking about full year. And we're not talking about four-year-olds or three-year-olds, we're talking about birth to five. And so, though this Commission's focused on three and four, I know as a city and as a state and as a society, we're focused on birth to five. But dosage is absolutely critical. The trap, the trap is money. Because when money is short, we tend to say, okay, we'll put two children in a day slot. And yet, the statistics say that doesn't work. And we have, we're doing a lot of research in our own studies now at Brightside because we have so many children in care, that time does matter. That six-hour day, that full-day program absolutely matters, so watch the trap. If you only have a dollar to spend, sometimes it makes us feel good as adults to say, let's put two children in that day. And yet, the science and the studies and the research shows it doesn't work because the intervention's not enough. And so, dosage is absolutely critical. The second piece is the continuity of care, the continuity of positive relationship is equally important. And so, that's one of the policy issues. Our workforce is not where it needs to be. We have way too much turnover in this field, and we don't have the continuity of care that a child needs with that relationship. This is where the social-emotional development is so critical in that relationship, which is equally important to whether they can know their alphabet, can count, it's equally important in their social-emotional development. And so, two big policy issues. One is workforce. We've got to figure out how to professionalize this workforce. So, if you choose to be in it, you don't choose to be in poverty, which is what it is today. Most of our workforce today is in poverty because we don't have, we've not allocated enough money. And there are some examples across the country. We can look north in New York City where they put a floor out there that says, you're not going to be in poverty if you're going to be in this field. So, we have to figure out the continuity of care. But the other part of continuity of care is consistency through birth through five. We need a mixed delivery system of public school options and community-based options. We have parents who work, and we don't want children to go into an early child education kindergarten readiness program only to have to leave at 3:00. So, we need to figure out a continuity of care, whether the parents are working, they need before school, during school, after school. We got to make sure that that continuity is there. And the third one is the intentionality of curriculum. This is where the education system comes into play. This is not childcare. This is not custodial babysitting. This is actually making a difference in that child's life. And so, the intentionality of love and nurture is not enough on this one. We've got to make sure that the organizations and the network that we've picked have the capabilities, the competencies, to actually make a difference in that child's life. We need programs to have, to be able to invest in capabilities, instructional coaches, support, intervention services. This has to be a lot of capabilities of the organization so that we can be confident that if a child comes through these programs, they are ready. And so, that intentionality goes back to that workforce, too. And so, I'm in a room full of credentials, I'm sure. Credentials are not enough. We need to develop skills. The credentials are the ticket to get in the door, but the development of the skills and the disposition of our workforce has to be there. And that intentionality and the professional development and the coaching and mentoring is so, so important. And so, I know my time is limited, and so, and you're going to have a lot of people here speaking about a lot of different things. But I want to reinforce also, we've reached a crossroads. We're at the point in our society, whether it's across the United States, here in Philadelphia, anywhere that we look at, we're at a point of diminishing returns with the money that we're spending. We continue to spend money, and we still statistically, all the results show how many children here who will get to high school and not finish. And then, we know the bad stuff starts. Incarceration, pregnancy, social service dependencies. So, we're spending the money. We need to figure out how to spend the money differently and actually intervene in these children's lives so that we're investing in them now because we can't wait. Again, I go back to those 1,800 days. We cannot wait to get there. And so, we can either continue to spend the money the way we are and get the results that we're getting, or do something different. And I applaud the Commission and the city and the administration, everyone involved, to be here. But it is absolutely critical to get there now. We can't wait. And we can look north and point to someone who said, we're going to do it in one year, we're going to have all our four-year-olds in the program. It can be done, but it'll take leadership to get us there. And so, when you think about the recommendations that you have to make and the decisions you have to make, remember the trap. Two is not better than one if it's at the expense of time. And so, at this point in time, if it's not us at this time, then who? And if not now, when? Because we're losing generations of children. And if not enough spend, why spend any at all? I don't want to, I'm so concerned that we don't do the right thing, and 10 years from now, we're looking back, go, oh, this early child education thing didn't work. We know how it works if we do it right. It won't work if we take the shortcuts around it. And so, I thank you for the time. I wish you good luck with the challenge that you're faced here, and I look forward to participating with you in any way I can going forward.
Thank you very much. Give them a ball, be around the ball. Thank you for your words, thank you for your input.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do have questions for a couple of members of this panel.
Sure.
Can we introduce you first? And we have two new Commission members, so we just wanted to acknowledge.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. To United Way and the demonstrated support you've shown over the last many years, briefly just articulate what that level of support has been around early childhood education, United Way.
You can, it's in millions of dollars. Is that what you're referring to? It's in years of service and thousands and thousands of hours. It's in years of service and thousands and thousands of hours of my employee staff supporting childcare providers, teachers, professionals, and agencies in their work.
So, define support. Is that technical assistance? Is that providing curriculum?
Yes, yes, and yes. It's about technical assistance, and it's providing support for the development of curriculum. It's about making sure that childcare providers or childcare operators have the ability to maintain quality space for their children. So, there could be quality improvement grants that are in there that we provide, or quality, we'd like to say investments into organizations that enable them to, once they get to, or get to, and then, once they stay at three and four star levels, to be able to continue that. And so, we help them in that regard. So, that's a direct grant to an organization of that. That's an example.
Okay, thank you. To Mr., pronounce your name for me, Mr. Kehoe?
Kehoe.
Okay. So, having been a mother in search of childcare years ago, time did matter, continuity of care mattered, intentionality of curriculum mattered, but what mattered more than anything else was quality of care. I did not hear you mention that in your remarks. So, could you address that, please?
Oh, great question, and I assumed it, so I apologize for it. Quality comes in so many different levels relative to the basic childcare of the nurturing and love of that child through the intentionality of the curriculum. So, quality runs from the absolute quality of care to the quality of the preparation program. So, it runs the gamut. I try to avoid the word quality because it means so many things, different things to different people. It's kind of like love.
It certainly does.
I love chocolate, I love my dog, I love my wife, they mean different things. But quality is absolutely paramount in this if we're actually going to make a difference in preparing children for school. The love and nurturing, the continuity of care of the relationship through the implementation of that early educational program so the kids are prepared, absolutely, absolutely has to be through all of it. And I can talk about our history of my own company.
Well, let me get to my questions because there are 20 other persons here. With regards to Brightside, is there a protocol or a set of protocols or a uniformity across the system when it comes to childcare services for children?
We, absolutely. We have our standard operating procedures across all of our functions. As you know, there's variability in implementation. We're constantly working to reduce that variability, but we have a standard way of doing business across all 65 locations across the three states.
And so, if you went into any child, if you went into three different Brightside experiences in the city, all three would be the same?
All three would have the same programs, yes.
Would all three be the same in terms of quality, in terms of cleanliness, in terms of expertise of staff, et cetera, et cetera?
I would say we have the same standard operating procedures, and I would tell you there's variability across our network, across all 65 schools. If I didn't tell you that, I would not be kind of talking about the truth in any organization that has 65 schools. But we do have one way of doing business, and our job is then to implement that program across that system. I am, as I mentioned earlier, as we've moved through the Stars program, we've moved more and more consistent every day because the rules and requirements of Stars forces us to get there.
Because of the rules and what?
The rules and regulations of the Star program to get the Star IIs and Star IVs. It requires you to continue to operate in a much more standard, consistent way across the whole quality continuum.
So, my last question is, if there's uniformity practice across the system in terms of delivery of services to children and cleanliness in the environments, where is there room for improvement with Brightside?
Oh, every day. There's opportunity for improvement in everything we do, every, no matter where our credentials and where we are. From basic, to your point, cleanliness picking up, to the better implementation of the program, more intentionality with the curriculum. So, I will always tell you, continuous improvement is the basis of the whole quality initiative in Keystone Stars, is how do we make tomorrow better than today, and next month better than this month? As an organization, we're so much better than we were a year ago and three years ago and five years ago.
How old is Brightside in Philadelphia?
1998, I think. So, since 2010 is when we've committed into the Stars program, and as of yesterday, we finally got to all of those being at Star III and Star IV. So, our recent history is better than our longer history.
There would be many who would agree with you.
Thank you, and I recognize that.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
I want to recognize, we did have two commission members come in. One is Councilwoman London, one is Brown, and another person is Rudy Jones. And so, welcome, and thank you for coming. And we will continue our panel now. Thank you, and you may be seated. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, they're leaving. We have the next team to come up now. Chris Ambrose is at Montgomery Early Learning, Leslie Spina from Kinder Academy, Natalie Renew from PHMC, and Mary Graham from Children's Village. Will they all come up now and be prepared to give their testimony and their views? Please try to remember to keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay.
Who wants to go first?
Yes, I do.
Ready? Who's Chris? Chris, you want to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here this afternoon. My name is Chris Ambrose. I am the Director of Montgomery Early Learning Center's Infant Friendship Center, which is located at 45th and Baltimore in University City. MELC is a nonprofit organization that has been serving children and their families since 1963. Our first center in the city of Philadelphia was the Infant Friendship Center, which was established in 1983 through a partnership with Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. I've been in the early childhood education field for 25 years. I started out as a two-year-old teacher, moved on and got my bachelor's degree and state certification, and became a kindergarten teacher, and then, I moved on to the director of a center. I have seen the need for universal pre-K every day from children who do not have the same educational opportunities in their homes, to students who have come into my kindergarten classrooms not ready to learn. I believe that the commission's top priorities should focus on ensuring that all programs move toward and maintain high-quality standards, that early childhood education teachers receive adequate compensation in order to keep the high-quality teachers in the field, and for all early childhood education settings to be safe, engaging, stimulating, and accessible to all children in the city. Early childhood education centers cannot be a one-size-fit-all model due to the various needs and the vast socio-economic diversity of the city of Philadelphia. The commission's plan should be flexible to meet the diversity and structure so that there are a variation of private pay, subsidized, and fully funded care. As an example, my center, the Infant Friendship Center, which is located in University City, is just 1.4 miles away from our other center located in West Philadelphia, which is Families First. They're located at 40th and Warren. Families First provides care to many families who receive subsidized care. In fact, 95% of the families are subsidized through the Child Care Information Services. They also provide services to early Head Start and pre-K count students who are 100% funded either from the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia for early Head Start, or the Philadelphia School District for pre-K counts. My center, the Infant Friendship Center, located just 1.4 miles away, is 50% private pay families who pay 100% of their tuition, who are doctors at CHOP or professors at University Penn, and also 50% of families who receive subsidy. So, we have a great mix of children, not only within our center, but within the two centers. This mix not only ensures that my center is serving the community needs, but the diverse population also provides wonderful learning experiences for the children and families. I love ISC for its diversity. MELC challenges our children to do things we wouldn't even attempt at home, or just some of the things the families have said about us. We believe that contributions from corporations who can be incentivized through opportunities like the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue Earned Income Tax Credit Program, or as an investment, should also be included in the brad funding model. According to the American Edge Report, "Strengthening Pennsylvania's Businesses Through Investment in Early Care and Education," there is a 200% return on investment for funding early childhood education. To ensure the commission's plan is sustainable, I would recommend that the commission look into the actual cost and future cost of high-quality early childhood ed. The nonprofit Finance Fund's recent report, "Overcoming Financial Barriers to Expanding High-Quality Early Care and Education in Southeast Pennsylvania," states that the average annual cost of high-quality care is $13,400. However, this number includes the current average salary of $24,000 for an early childhood education teacher with a bachelor's degree, which is less than half of the school district of Philadelphia's entry-level salary for elementary school teachers. This causes a disparity between the cost of high-quality early childhood education and the compensation for teachers. If the plan does not address wage equality, there simply will not be enough teachers to fill the classrooms. As a summary, I appreciate the commission's dedication and commitment to making universal pre-K in Philadelphia a sustainable reality. This is a significant step in the city's efforts to implement and recommend the recommendations from a Running Start Philadelphia Plan to Improve School Readiness. Universal pre-K will address a portion of the plan's call to provide high-quality education to children ages zero to five. I hope my input will be taken into consideration. I thank you very much for all the hard work and dedication that you have committed to this cause, and I truly believe that that will be the best for our future. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Spina. I'm from Kinder Academy, and we have been providing early care and education to the children of Philadelphia for over 20 years. Today, I'm here to speak along with everyone else about not only the need for, but the importance of high-quality early childhood education for the children of Philadelphia. I'm here to speak for the families that cannot be here but are in desperate need for high-quality programs that will ensure that their children get a strong and healthy start, a fair start, preparing them for success throughout their continuing educational experiences and into their lives as productive, contributing members of our community right here in Philadelphia. It should be the expectation, not the exception, and not a privilege for all children to receive equal educational opportunities from the beginning. Families should expect that their child will have access to and experiences with high-quality hands-on activities that encourage learning, exploration, and safe risk-taking. Teachers should have an understanding of child development and appropriate practice. It's not okay to house children in environments that limit their experiences and squash their curiosity. We must stand against just babysitting and demand environments that encourage our children and families to set high expectations. We have to plan for the future, and the future is now. You know the old adage, fail to plan, plan to fail. That has never been more true than in this situation right now, right here. Our families, for the sake of their children and the prosperity of our future, must plan for success. That begins at the beginning of education. Our community must be accountable to the same standard. So, that sounds easy, right? Piece of cake. Well, it should be, but the fact of the matter is, there are just not enough high-quality seats for all the children that need them. In just the ZIP codes 1-9-1-1, 1-9-1-4-9, 1-9-1-5-2, and 1-9-1-5-4, we have a demand for 11,305 childcare slots, including pre-K slots. We have 1,777 high-quality slots. That leaves almost 10,000 children to find some other kind of learning environment. 10,000, 10,000 children in just this little area, that's four ZIP codes of our city. This is a crisis. How many five-year-olds are arriving at the kindergarten door not prepared? How many children did not have the chance to explore, discover, experiment, and compose their fortitude for structural, for structured learning? Are they already at a disadvantage? How can we accept this as a society in which we first and foremost protect our children? How can we use the slogan, "Our children are the future," when this is what we plan for them? As this comes to the forefront of our mind as a country, more so to the amazing city of Philadelphia, I know you're all in agreement. We must make a change for our children, and we must do it now. I serve families in four ZIP codes in northeast Philadelphia. The myth, that's the hook. The myth is that people are living in, the people living in the northeast are well off. This is not true. It does not reflect the current demographic. Our facilities serve the working poor, the hidden poor. 95% of our children receive funding from one source or another and still struggle to keep afloat. We see transient, we see transients as people lose their funding because they were lucky enough to get a 50-cent raise. We see single mothers and single fathers living with their parents or cousins or whoever just to make ends meet. They do not consider themselves homeless, but their housing situation is always precarious. This can be a stressful life for a parent and child. When family have no option but to find childcare they can afford, to accept what is available, they often add unreliable or inferior care to already stressful environment in which they live. Having childcare that is not reliable impacts the parent's ability to maintain, to remain employed. Our families are hourly workers. If they miss one day of work because they do not have care, that is a loss of 20% of the pay, their pay. When you make $10 an hour, that's the food money. It's the food money. It's the very lowest of the basics. It's a vicious cycle of poverty, and how do we break this, how do we break the cycle? Help families and policymakers, all of you, understand that education begins early. Invest in education. It is clear and proven. Invest in these children, give them a strong start, reduce the number of children that need special education and other support service. It helps fund itself into the future. Most importantly, ensure that all children have access to early childhood environments that seek to lay the foundation of success and future achievement. Plant the seeds of high expectations for everyone. Prosperity and success come in many forms. I am so fortunate.
Thank you.
I get to see this every day.
Thank you very much. So, we are really nice people up here, and we do not want to interrupt, especially since many of you have, are friends. But when you hear that buzzer, I want to ask you to just figure out a couple of wrap-up sentences, okay? And you don't need to thank us and, or any of that, but this is vital testimony, and I want to make sure we get to hear all of it. The other thing I'm going to do is ask for us a quick set change because I know Mary needs to get a chair, so if one of you who hasn't, who has already spoken would switch with Mary. And while she's doing that, I want to acknowledge and thank Councilman Mark Squilla for coming and joining these hearings.
My name is Natalie Renew, and I am the Managing Director for Early Childhood Education at Public Health Management Corporation. PHMC is Pennsylvania's Public Health Institute, and we operate many early childhood education programs, including the Southeast Regional Key and the Philadelphia Head Start Partnership. The Southeast Regional Key, CIRC, operates the Keystone Stars program on behalf of the Commonwealth in Philadelphia, Montgomery, and Delaware Counties. Today, I'd like to share with you how the existing infrastructure, the expert resources, and the funding of Keystone Stars can be leveraged to support the success of the city's universal pre-kindergarten service strategy. The CIRC reviews and designates programs at quality levels of Star I through IV, provides grants to support program improvements, and facilitates training and technical assistance to support increasing the quality of care for our youngest learners. Keystone Stars has a set of performance standards that are based on national best practices for young children. These standards include staff and director qualifications and training requirements, curricula and learning environments that are developmentally appropriate and guided by the Pennsylvania Early Learning Standards, intentional connections with families and communities, and effective administration and management. Funds and supports associated with Keystone Stars participation, particularly as Star III and IV levels, have been integral to the development and maintenance of high-quality programs in Philadelphia. Given constraints in funding, many believe that we need to consolidate funding to the highest-quality providers where we are assured of the best outcomes for children. This is a responsible strategy. While the path to Star III and IV requires significant investment, buy-in, and organizational change, there is an array of support for providers that are committed to high-quality services and positive outcomes for children. There are significant state and local resources to support providers that want to demonstrate high-quality operations and participate in pre-K and high-quality initiatives. The CIRC and its expert partners provide $1.5 million worth of training and technical assistance to providers in our region each year. These services include technical assistance as well as coursework at local institutions of higher education. Furthermore, over $2 million of Keystone Stars grants are provided to Star I and II providers to support them in moving to III and IV. The Commonwealth also maintains a Tuition Assistance Scholarship Program, providing up to $6,000 per person per year to pursue credentialing to advance in the Keystone Stars program. Lastly, we are fortunate to have the local investment in the United Way Success by Six program that provides intensive training, technical assistance, and peer support to advance Star III, Star II providers to Star III. I want to emphasize the magnitude of impact created by alignment between early learning initiatives in our city. Philadelphia has been a leader in using Stars ratings to advance STAR three, STAR two providers to STAR three. I want to emphasize the magnitude of impact created by alignment between early learning initiatives in our city. Philadelphia has been a leader in using STAR's ratings to make key decisions that align local initiatives with statewide priorities and national research. For several years now, the school district of Philadelphia has led the way in requiring its contracted partners to participate at STAR three and four, ensuring quality of environments, best educational practices, and management capacity. Others have followed suit, and many opportunities are only available to STAR threes and fours, and in turn have improved services for young children. I would recommend that the city's universal pre-K strategy continue this approach and direct resources to providers with the highest-quality services. In closing, I will say that of the eighteen-hundred licensed childcare providers in the city, only a hundred and eighty-six of these programs are at STAR three and four. And while there are plenty of supports to get providers to STAR and three, the gap is really in how we maintain that level of quality. We must increase the support for ongoing operations at the highest levels to ensure that all the children in our city have access to the highest-quality care. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Mary Graham, Executive Director, Children's Village located in Center City. As a professional in the field for forty years, I cannot overstate that the single most important aspect of delivering quality universal pre-K is funding. In Pennsylvania, we fund early childhood education in a number of ways. We have Childcare Works, which is a program for the working poor, Head Start Dollars, and Pennsylvania Pre-K Counts. Let's look at how each of these programs fund education for young children. As a NACI-accredited STAR four program, which is the highest rated possible, we are reimbursed ninety-four-hundred-and-ninety dollars a year for preschooler. Children typically attend ten hours a day, two-hundred-and-sixty days a year. That comes to three-sixty-five an hour. For Head Start, funding is sixty-eight-hundred dollars a year. These programs operate six hours a day, a hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty days a year. That reimbursement rate, six-thirty an hour. Pennsylvania Pre-K Counts provides eight thousand dollars a year. That's when Governor Wolf's budget passes. Children are in pre-K programs five hours a day, a hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty days a year. That reimbursement rate, eight-eighty-nine. As a center director who has the majority of children funded under Childcare Works, which is the lowest reimbursement, I would love eight-eighty-nine an hour. But really, that amount just is not enough to fund high-quality care. Look around the city. Can you find a parking lot where you can park your car for eight-eighty-nine an hour? Not likely. Yet, highly-qualified educators are expected to provide the best possible learning experience to a child for eight-eighty-nine an hour. At this rate, we are expected to hire a state-certified teacher who must meet the same standards as teachers in public schools. With twenty children in a classroom, the second teacher must have an associate's degree in early childhood education. These teachers deserve health benefits. In fact, under the Affordable Care Act, many providers, providers are required to offer health benefits. To offer pre-K Counts programs, providers must earn a STAR three or four rating. That means the center achieved higher standards across the area in environments, materials, and staff qualifications. What about family engagement? Children who are supported by their families do better in school. Agencies must provide workshops, volunteer opportunities, and other supports for families. And who does this? Not just the teachers, but others in the center. Again, that comes out of that eight-eighty-nine. Nutrition? Uh-huh. Healthy foods lead to better health. Children need to be healthy so they can learn. Again, that comes out of the eight-eighty-nine. Children at risk? Those children from homes that are low-income or non-English-speaking or children with special needs. At our center, we have translators and interpreters, and we have a special-needs psychologist. Again, eight-eighty-nine pays for that. The list goes on, and I won't belabor it, and I also won't take time addressing how underpaid teachers are. As the work of this commission continues, we must first look at funding. We cannot do this on the cheap and in our enthusiasm to provide this opportunity to as many children as possible. Let's not sacrifice quality for quantity. Thank you.
Hi. I had two questions, and you don't have to answer them now, but if you could send them to us, that would be really helpful. The one question, Natalie, would be around the nonprofit facilities fund estimate of about thirteen thousand dollars versus what you think based on the system that you run needs. What would you, what would you, how would you change that number and why? What would be the reasons to change that and by what factors? And then, Mary, if you would be so kind as to submit the data that you presented at a classroom level, because I think the question of eight-eighty versus six-eighty, and we were listening, we might sum that up by age, by classroom level, and we would know even a bigger picture on what.
They were all for preschoolers.
Yes, so great. If you could send by at a classroom rather than a per child, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Panel two. And then, moving forward, let's get the next panel, panel three. Makita Holly, on behalf of Shaw Feldman District 1199-C and Upgrading Fund, Amy Friedlander, Early Childhood Educators Workforce Transformation Initiative, and George Jackson, on behalf of Jerry Jordan, PFT.
And while they're taking their places, I just want to make an announcement to remind you that if you have not submitted your testimony via the website, to please do that, because we'd like to make all of that available to the public to review. And the webs, and the, actually, you email it as an attachment to prek@philla.gov, but you can also find that on the website.
Okay, Makita, you can begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Makita Holly. I'm with District 1199-C Training and Upgrading Fund. I'm the Director of Workforce Development there. The District 1199-C Training and Upgrading Fund, a labor-management partnership of the National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees, AFSMI, and more than fifty Delaware Valley employers, applauds the city of Philadelphia in its goal of ensuring that every three- and four-year-old in Philadelphia has access to high-quality, affordable, and accessible educational services. The 1199-C Training Fund works tirelessly to support the efforts of over five thousand Philadelphians annually, many of whom have struggled in gaining access to a quality education that meets their educational, social, and emotional needs. We serve out-of-school and out-of-work youth, unemployed adults, and low-wage workers who seek our services to gain the academic and essential workforce skills that will qualify them for GED, post-secondary education, and family-sustaining employment opportunities. Our experience in serving the wonderful residents of Philadelphia convinces us that quality universal pre-kindergarten is an important part of the solution to fighting poverty, ensuring that the children of Philadelphia get a good start in their educational experience and thereby significantly reducing the number of vulnerable, educationally, and economically disadvantaged Philadelphians. We applaud the efforts of this commission, the Delaware Valley Association for the Education of Young Children, and the many other child advocates that are organizing to make quality universal pre-kindergarten a reality in Philadelphia. We have learned in the healthcare industry that quality care requires that employers have access to a quality, trained, and educated workforce. Implementation of pre-kindergarten demands that more attention be paid to creating a skilled childcare workforce with opportunities for career growth and advancement in the early childhood education and related human services education sectors and a livable wage. Childcare and early, and early childhood education workers from entry-level employment through managerial roles will need opportunities to quickly upgrade skills, obtain credentials that attest to competency attainment, and have access to college credit and degree programs. Likewise, as these workers gain new skills and credentials, their employers must offer competitive wage steps that will ensure employee retention and the resulting consistency of care that Philadelphia's children need. The 1199-C Training Fund is working with DVESE to design a registered apprenticeship that will help address the mutual workforce needs of employers and childcare providers by creating a streamlined career path that includes classroom and on-the-job training linked to credentials and college credits. Employers and workforce policymakers increasingly recognize registered apprenticeship as a valid and valuable, low-cost, high-return training strategy. The 1199-C Training and Upgrading Fund and its employer partners are deeply engaged in the White House-led national push to expand the number of apprenticeship programs in non-traditional industries, and we are now working with childcare partners to create this opportunity in alignment with the commission's efforts to implement universal pre-kindergarten. We look forward to working with childcare employer partners and post-secondary collegiate partners to create a childcare registered apprenticeship that will help ensure the delivery of high-quality childcare provided by a highly-trained professional workforce.
Thank you very much. You can begin.
Oh, thank you. Philadelphia Federation of Teachers President Jerry Jordan thanks you for the opportunity to testify, and we know that there's a very good reason that Philadelphia voters overwhelmingly voted for the creation of the Commission on Universal Pre-K. We had a lot of people here talk about all the reasons that we needed, and I just had a few notes on that, which are on the testimony, so I will skip right to the crux of the matter. In a city where the poverty rate is over twenty-six percent, we are seeing a growing number of children who are starting their academic careers at a tremendous disadvantage. And we know that to be competitive in a global economy, our children need to receive the best education possible, but by denying so many of them access to quality pre-K programs, we're shortchanging our students before they arrive for their first day of kindergarten. And despite the countless studies showing the impact of pre-K on reading development, our district has drastically cut pre-K funding year after year. And so now, we find ourselves in the midst of Read by Four, which is this massive effort to have children reading on grade level by the fourth grade. The cuts in pre-K have resulted in this reading level crisis, and the true shame of that is that it did not have to be this way. Philadelphia's pre-K system is a shell of what it once was. For years, bright futures in Head Start programs run in public schools were in high demand in every corner of the city. Programs that had waiting lists and that should have been expanded were instead cut by the district, and in two thousand thirteen, the district made the ill-fated decision to outsource Head Start services despite a spotty track record among some of the private childcare providers implementing the school district's early childhood education curriculum. And so while the PFT is very grateful that this commission has been formed, it's unfortunate to see that Philadelphia has regressed from a nationally-louded early childhood education program taught by certified, high-quality instructors to what it is now, which is this pre-K state of emergency. And keep in mind that the cuts to Head Start were facilitated not by a lack of resources, at the time anyway, but by fiscal mismanagement of Title I funds. And once again, we find ourselves in an example of our children paying the price for poor fiscal management. The PFT wants to be a full partner in moving forward with the universal pre-K agenda, but educators need to play a major role in the design and implementation of an early childhood education system. The current literacy crisis in our schools shows us that any pre-K programs need to be administered by certified early childhood educators and not just private contractors. I hope that today marks a fresh start in the way we approach the education of our youngest children, and I look forward to many more conversations as we look to bring a first-class pre-K program back to Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much.
So, our next scheduled testifier is Amy Friedlander. I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, and we are trying to gauge our time here, so we're actually going to ask you, to the greatest extent possible, to try to get it down to two minutes, so.
And to submit your comments. We shall have your comments, and therefore, we will have them on our record, but we just want to make sure that we do give everybody an opportunity to present.
So, talk fast.
There are two salient and perhaps non-coincidental facts related to the ECE workforce nationally and locally. It is predominantly female, and it is woefully underpaid. While there are some differences in compensation based on the type of program setting, the type of public funding source, and the credentials of the teacher, in Philadelphia, ECE teachers typically earn approximately half of what kindergarten teachers earn. Looking across sectors, ECE teachers earn what janitors and parking lot attendants earn. And often, because the early child education sector is not scaled, teachers work for small businesses or small-to-medium-sized nonprofits and receive minimal to no benefits. This compensation package leads to financial insecurity and stress for teachers. Nationally, half of the ECE teachers are so poor that they rely on some type of public benefits. While we expect our teachers to implement curriculum, assess students, and partner with families in order to ensure that children register for and arrive academically and socially prepared for kindergarten, teachers are, in fact, worrying about how to feed their own families. Poor compensation and high financial stress lead to turnover rates among ECE teachers of approximately thirty percent. Generally speaking, programs serving children from lower-income households experience higher turnover than centers earning private pay. As you've heard, consistent staff lead to positive child outcomes, yet turnover is high and continuity is low. ECE teacher compensation is a legitimate proxy for quality, and I would encourage the commission to use that proxy as you establish requirements and guidelines around pre-K throughout the city.
Thank you.
And yes, if you'd quickly introduce yourself.
I'm Carol Williams-Green. I am the founder of the Cops Creek Community Environmental Education Center. In my experience, I taught in the school district of Philadelphia. I was a kindergarten teacher. I taught Head Start, and I also have a supervisory certificate of early childhood education. But my background is in science education, and I became a supervisor of science for the school district of Philadelphia. I had the experience of seeing the Sweden model of pre-K. I also saw the experience of pre-K program in New Zealand and Australia. And what they did, which is something we can do in Philadelphia, is use our parks in helping families, because I think there's a shortage here of, if you have families in poverty, we have to figure out a way to help them understand the importance of education. You can send them to the kindergarten or pre-K, but if the family member does not appreciate the importance of what you're trying to do. So, in case you didn't know, as of last week, President Obama has put out a grant for Learn, Find Your Park. Philadelphia has one of the largest and oldest parks in the United States, and I, we are training high-school students, which I saw in Australia, our eleventh and twelfth graders are going to be able to take preschool and kindergarten children on our trails come spring. If I gave you an apple and I told you to describe it to me, you would be amazed at how much language came out of that. So, there are ways in which we can create activities that parents can engage in so that they, in turn, can go back and work with their children. Thank you so much for the privilege of working with you.
Thank you very much.
Very good panel. Okay, we're moving forward nicely. Our next panel, panel number four. Sherri Crosby from Manor College, Rachel Anare from Action for Early Learning, Sean Towery from PCCY, and Kobelia Devine from Citizens Consulting Group. Can everybody come, and we'll begin. We're moving forward. Time is of the essence, everyone. We're trying to get everyone heard. It is now almost five fifteen, and we still have a few more panels to go, and we really, 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 really want to hear your voices. So, as soon as you settle down, our first speaker will be Sherri. You ready?
Right. Hi, my name is Sherri Crosby. I'm from Manor College, and I'm a professor of early childhood education, and I've been in the field for twenty years. I promise mine is very short. I gave mine a title, "A Cure to the Crimes We Have Committed." Collectively, in the state of Pennsylvania, we have committed a great crime against the children of Philadelphia. Each year, thousands of children do not attend high-quality preschool experiences. This is often due to the lack of available high-quality programs and the cost parents must endure to ensure that their children receive the best foundation. The years before age five are critical, and if we do not ensure that all children in Philadelphia have access to free, high-quality preschool programming, we are giving them a life sentence to poverty, illiteracy, or prison. The children of Philadelphia are paying for a crime they did not commit. As an educator who has dedicated her life to serving the early childhood community, I have seen Pennsylvania make strides in the right direction, but there is still much that needs to be done. As a professor, I have watched many students enter college ill-prepared for college-level work, often needing remedial education for reading, writing, and mathematics. All three of these subjects have their roots in the preschool year. All three of these subjects have their roots in the preschool years. The preschool years lay the foundation for future success and help children develop into adults who have well-developed critical thinking skills, can read well, and so much more. It's time for Pennsylvania to right the crimes that they have committed against children and give every child in Philadelphia access to free, high-quality preschool programming by adopting, supporting fully, and implementing universal pre-K. By doing so, we can serve as a model and lead the way for universal pre-K to become a reality for all children in Pennsylvania. Now ask yourself, which is cheaper, educating a child or sending them to a life of poverty or prison? Please choose wisely.
Well put. Well put, Ms. Sherri. Next up. Rachel.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your work on this commission and for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Public Citizens for Children and Youth. I want to focus, I'm going to try to condense this on the fly, and focus my remarks on talking about the cost of moving all preschoolers into high-quality early childhood education. Currently, we're talking about 40,000 three- and four-year-olds in the city, and there are about 14,000 of those children that we really need to focus on right now. The majority of those kids are low-income, and research shows that they're starting school a year to 18 months behind their more affluent peers in cognitive and social-emotional development. So, how do I get to 14,000? Based on experiences elsewhere, when families are offered quality pre-K, about 1 in 5 families elect not to send the children to preschool. Also, we're doing pretty well in Philadelphia. We already have about 40% of our preschoolers in high-quality programs, either through the school district or private settings. And that leaves about 36% left. These are the kids who are enrolled in childcare that's not high-quality, that's not helping them maximize their potential. Some quick math on the cost. If you take those kids and you multiply by $8,500, which is the current reimbursement for pre-K counts, you're going to get $120 million. Now, we know that the true cost of high-quality care year-round, full-day, is a lot more than that. And if that $120 million were available today, we wouldn't be able to spend it, because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the workforce yet to be able to do that. Therefore, I'm encouraging the Commission to think about how we can roll out a sustainable plan that weaves together system-wide improvements to build the workforce and our physical capacity over the course of a few or several years. Also, I wanted to point out that some operating funds may already be available. Oops. Well, $226 million already flows into the city every year in the form of subsidy, and of those 14,000 kids, 11,000 of them are getting subsidy already. Now, it's not a one-to-one offset. There are lots of children who will still need subsidy even if they have pre-K, but it means that the problem is not insurmountable, and we may be talking about offsetting maybe half that $120 million cost. If we can bring it down to 60, if the city can stage up at $20 million a year, we're talking about something that's very doable. We also have pushes on the state and federal level, which we don't know, but that could help us very much in the coming years. So, consider how building up supply factors, including the workforce, over the course of a few years can help. Consult with experts on the true cost of quality so providers can be reimbursed in a fair and sustainable way. Support policies that reach out to families and encourage parental choices around quality so the city can convert as much as possible that subsidy money into quality. And provide alternatives such as the Home-Based Hippie Program that's now beginning in South Philly for those families that opt out of pre-K. Finally, the evidence shows that young children benefit from mixed income and inclusive classrooms. Let pre-K be a model for public schooling of uniform excellence in a diverse city. We should look to New York and even to European countries where universal pre-K has been the norm for generations as a model for how to build public buy-in and willingness to support early education through taxes.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. What is life? Life equals learning, for they are inextricably intertwined. For faith-based believers, the Bible states, "Raise a child in the way that he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." For science-based believers, Sir Isaac Newton in the Laws of Motion, and in particular the Law of Inertia states, "An object at rest stays at rest, and an object in motion stays in motion with the same speed and in the same direction unless acted upon by an unbalanced force." How does this relate to universal pre-K? Universal pre-K gets that body in motion. Universal pre-K is a difference in a child existing versus a child living. You are planting the seeds early for a wonderful harvest. I'm a parent navigated with the West Philadelphia Action for Early Learning Initiative. I'm also the mother of a three-year-old boy with autism. AFFO is a Drexel University-led collaboration of social service and education agencies and community stakeholders working to create an education support system for students and families in the West Philadelphia Promise Zone. The initiative aims to build awareness around the importance of early childhood education while strengthening the capacity of childcare centers and more effectively linking Head Starts and pre-Ks to local kindergartens. It also supports pre-K to K instruction with a strong emphasis on literacy so that children are better prepared for kindergarten and reading by third grade. Drexel has partnered with People's Emergency Center to provide community outreach and parent engagement around the importance of quality early childhood education. Universal pre-K is great, but it's not enough. Enough is Philadelphia's children must have access to high-quality pre-K. Enough is teachers must have equitable pay, opportunities for professional development, especially around understanding children's social and emotional needs. Parents must understand the importance of quality early childhood education, developmental milestones. The majority of childcare centers in AFFO's target area are low-quality, about 65%. And within those low-quality center, the majority of children come from the community, which is about 90%. While the few high-quality centers have the majority of children from outside the neighborhood. Additionally, 22% of the neighborhood children are not enrolled in any childhood program. This lack of access to quality pre-K for low-income children needs to be reversed. Low-quality centers are challenged by lack of educational resources, staff with low educational levels, high turnover among staff and administration, directors who struggle with Star required paperwork, lack of time resources for administrative staff and instructors to participate in professional development, excuse me. The pre-K Commission has the opportunity to support all of the Philadelphia's children by addressing these additional important factors. Finally, I would like to leave you with this thought that is adapted from a principle in macroeconomics, which has to do with investment and yield returns. I will do my best to put my spin on it. A big and wise investment yields a great return that pays in dividends for years to come. Poor investment yields negative, little, or poor return. If you invest in our children, I guarantee you, you will see a return. As a matter of fact, I double dare you to invest in our city's children, who are our treasure, for they are our future. Thank you. Leave me in saying, "ECE, early childhood education, pre-K for PS." Thank you. Thank you.
That's great community organizing. Quabilia, come quickly.
Good evening, city council members and commission members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present. My name is Quabilia Devine, and I'm speaking as a longtime community activist and elected committee person in the 11th ward. I live in North Philadelphia by choice. Before I left for college, my grandfather told me, "Don't get so smart that you forget what you got smart to do." While I agree that providing quality pre-K for all children is a good thing, I must question the process and the procedure. Philadelphia launched a Running Start in June, and according to the website, it is a crucial component of Share Prosperity Philadelphia, and its purpose is to do some anti-poverty or reduce poverty. One of the strategies that is talked about is making sure that it advocates that all programs receiving public funds be required to participate in Keystone Stars. Where I live, there is a combination of star-rated and non-star-rated programs. The one thing that each of these centers has in common is that they provide early education service to many low-income families who, without it, would not be able to go to their low-wage earning, low-wage-paying jobs. Another thing about the families in my neighborhood is that, once their young scholars are transitioned into kindergarten, despite the quality rating of a pre-K that they attend, most children attend the same chronically failing neighborhood school that their parents attended. Thus, the reason for my questioning the process and the procedure that you're going to use to ensure universal pre-K. I have a couple of other questions. Why spend time, money, and other resources on ensuring that all students are enrolled in pre-K when the same attention is not being paid to students once they reach kindergarten and progress to the 12th grade? According to a Running Start, there are fewer than half of the district's third-grade students who score proficient or advanced in reading and math. What percentage of Philadelphia's low-income students who attended a high-quality pre-K are proficient in reading and math by the time they reach third grade? Also, according to a Running Start, 63% of Philadelphia's children under six live in poverty, 45% of the children under five are African-American, and 68,000 early childcare -- and of the 68,000 early childcare slots, only 21% provide high-quality care, meaning Star III or Star IV. Because of that, I'm looking at the unintended consequences of trying to make sure that all pre-K programs are high-quality. Number one, we need to make sure that those programs are, the employees of those programs are not laid off or no longer having a job, because those people in our communities work in pre-K programs that may not be high-quality. The other thing is, what kind of technical assistance are you going to provide to those low-quality programs to help them become Star III and Star IV programs? Because you have programs that are already Star III and Star IV, all you have to do is match them up and have a mentoring type of a program so that they can then work with those high-quality programs. As I stated in the beginning, I agree that all of Philadelphia's children need equal access to high-quality education at all levels. There are too many questions that must be answered about how the children, families, and providers in neighborhoods like mine will be impacted, informed, and included in the plan for a Running Start and universal pre-K. In the words of my grandfather, "What did you get smart to do? If you got smart to serve Philadelphia's poor families, then you cannot allow decisions to be made about them without them." Ooh. That's a good one. That's awesome. Okay, next panel. Our next panel is Heather Davis-Jones from FACS Charter, F-A-C-T-S Charter, Suzanne Morris from DBA EYC, and Ellen Ramage from Refugee Employment and Advance Group Program. Is everyone here?
Yep.
All right. We're winding down nicely. Time is going great. Everybody keep your comments to two minutes. I think we can get through to everybody with a nice wrap-up. All right, our first speaker is Heather. Second will be Suzanne, and the third will be Ellen in that way.
Hi, my name is Heather Davis-Jones, and my daughter is a pre-K count student, and she also has an IEP. She attends school from 8:30 to 3:30 p.m., and it's a full program, full-day program. Last year, her program was canceled because of funding issues. According to the school, one of the issues is that it's difficult to find pre-K count certified teachers, because pre-K count certified teachers with advanced degrees are generally paid far less than their K through 12 peers. The school also said that their reimbursements at $8,500 were inadequate because they spent almost double that per child. I strongly believe, and the research shows, if Pennsylvania wants to increase the number of high-school graduates and facilitate a lifelong learning, love of learning, we need to use Oklahoma as an example, because I know it sounds crazy, but Oklahoma. All of their teachers have, pre-K teachers have a college degree and a certificate in early childhood education, and they are paid the same wage as their K through 12 teachers. Teacher-certified in early education can recognize disabilities that tend to emerge at a young age and can understand the best ways to handle behavior problems. My daughter's previous school had an occupational and speech therapist on staff, the one that was closed, when she started preschool, and she didn't speak for a year when she had an itinerant speech therapist. But one year with a speech therapist on staff, she was able to improve greatly. One thing I want to suggest is that we do not use sin taxes as a funding source. These taxes are used to discourage sin and therefore are not a stable funding source. For example, California at one point used the same tobacco sin tax to fund marketing campaigns against smoking as it did to fund preschool. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Morris. I'm the Assistant Director for Public Policy at DEVC, but I came here today to provide an additional dimension to this conversation, and that's of a middle-income parent in Philadelphia. A few weeks ago, I began reaching out to my social networks to encourage parents to provide their thoughts on pre-K for this hearing, and the response was shockingly underwhelming, even to me. Several parents confessed that while they support universal pre-K, they were skeptical that this plan could help all families or be as far-reaching as New York's recent expansion. And after their own journeys of finding pre-K for their own children, some said that they were completely burnt out. I know what they mean. The current system we have challenges even the most savvy and well-resourced parents. As parents, we know with absolute certainty that learning begins at birth, and the formative first year is perhaps the most critical, critical one for healthful brain development. Yet, parents of all income levels are left scrambling for care for our youngest children in Philadelphia as a shortage of quality infant settings means waitlists stretch more than a year. The infant care challenge creates a baseline of panic around quality early learning that does not abate for families as their children age. The specifics of what happened, what happens in toddler and pre-K programs is a mystery for new parents. Curriculums, waitlists, costs, and staff qualifications are often buried beneath a network unearthed only through word-of-mouth research and site visits. Things that really matter to parents, how long teachers have been at a program, the quality of staff interaction with the children, the diversity of staff and students, don't scale into our current quality rating system in a way that's transparent. It's left up to parents to observe for themselves what feels right for their child while trying to maintain a professional and personal schedule. It's no wonder that, once a family has landed a program that fits for their child, they've exhausted their capacity to engage. To add, we know the city is in dire straits for affordable, quality, pre-K programs, as we've heard today. Quality pre-K programs, like the one my child is enrolled in, comes at a cost, which it should. We know quality costs money, and that our children, all children, are worth it, but the cost of being shouldered by low- and middle-income families is too high to bear. Our son's care costs 14% of our gross yearly income, or a little more than $17,000 a year. That's for four days a week. He's two years old, so when he reaches pre-K next year, we'll get a little bit of a discount, just under $16,000 a year. Add another typical household cost, and even with two middle-income working parents, we're left with no room for college savings, investments in our home, or the most painful thing to me, a second child. And should my heart went out of a reason and we do expand our family, the temptation to move to a surrounding county with more affordable, quality-care options will go from a boring option to a heartbreaking must for us. So I encourage this commission to think about an inclusive plan that is streamlined and easy to comprehend with a system of entry, that pushes for early learning settings that are rich in authentic diversity and askew economic and social segregation, that implement curriculums that honor children as exploratory playful learners and not testing machines, and, if possible, that shaves a small percentage off the price tag for middle-income working families like mine while fully funding low-income parents that are most at risk for school failure. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Ellen Ramage. I am a case manager at a resettlement, a refugee resettlement agency in Philadelphia, and my job is to take recent arrivals to the United States and set them up with daycare so that they can find employment and get off of public benefits. Really, what I wanted to talk to you about today was that there is a need for full-day, year-long care. Many of my families have one worker who might be working maybe, our average is $8.80 an hour, maybe packing fruit, packing meat. And mom wants to work, but mom can't because she's got to do school drop-off, school pickup, and the daycares that are available to us are through CCIS and Head Start, and often those are not options for my clients. So, a full-day So a full-day, year-long daycare solution, universal pre-K, what-have-you, would really enable my clients to work opposite shifts, and then when they have a commuting overlap in the afternoon, they don't have to worry because the kids are already in school. And I could really go through, I'm sure you already know how beneficial it is for our trauma-impacted children to be in a stable environment where they're able to develop healthy relationships, learn English, be prepared for kindergarten, I know you already know that, but I would also advise you to think about the economic opportunities it provides for our families, who, this could be the difference between them accepting another job or just having one wage earner. So that's essentially it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, for our next panel, William Capers from Old City Day School, Carol Kalimnik from APPS PFT, and Delores Shaw Perret. Ready, we can begin with William Capers.
Good afternoon. My name is William Capers, and I am the owner of Old City Day School. We currently have three locations in the Philadelphia area. I have been in childcare since 2005, starting in the Montgomery and Chester County areas and coming into Philadelphia in 2010. The reason why I am here is because I saw a great disparity between the quality of childcare centers that I saw in Montgomery and Chester County versus in Philadelphia. I decided to come down to Philadelphia to make a difference, because I saw that a lot of the communities were having a lack of quality care, but there weren't any centers there that really had the quality programs that were mandatory in Montgomery and Chester Counties. Well, when I came into Philadelphia, my first center was in Old City, and I was able to get a diverse group of people that came to the center, filled it up, and it was great. So then I moved to Germantown, and I quickly found out why the disparity exists. The disparity exists because there's a, there's a lack of people that are able to afford a quality program. I get a lot of people that come into my program that love it, but then they can't afford it. And when I say quality, I want to define what quality is. We offer a curriculum from infant through preschool. We do have yoga, we have music, we have soccer, all the things that are standard in Montgomery County that people don't even ask if you have, because you better have it or else you're not going to have kids. We have that here, but as a result of the cost of those things, we don't have the people. I won't, I don't even have the time to get into the fact that we, it's almost impossible to pay the teachers what they deserve, it's impossible to fund the 401K plan you have, the benefits. I feel like it's a carrot when you get the invite to come to Philly to do business versus the stick you get when you get here. So, universal childcare would at least give us a better pool of people to work with that would be able to afford the quality programs that we want to offer. Thank you.
Well, sir, thank you so much. I wonder if you would be willing to send us more information about your costs and what it requires for you to get that program in Old City that's not affordable in Germantown, because I think we're really trying to wrap our heads around that. So I understand you may not want to do that here, and we need to move on, but if you could send that to us, that would be outstanding.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Delores Shaw. I live in Council District 7 in ZIP Code 19140, one of the poorest ZIP Codes and one of the poorest areas in the city. I have sent three kids through preschool programs in different sections of the city over a period of 20 years. I know the value of the high-quality preschool, because they all had high-quality preschool. A couple of years ago, when my grandson became three, we started seeking out high-quality preschool for him. That proved to be a challenge. There were no high-quality centers in my neighborhood. I had to leave my neighborhood in 1940 and cross Broad Street in order to get him high-quality care. It was worth every minute that I spent back and forth off the bus. But one of the things I also want to talk about here is the workers. Over 20 years, I've seen lots of dedicated, high-quality ECE workers without the proper accreditations, without the proper teacher certifications, who were left out of the realm because they could not get the certification they needed. Recently, I had the good fortune that when my grandson went to preschool to meet a young woman there, who was very dedicated to all her children. She was bilingual, and in my bilingual community, she was very much an asset. But, what happened was, her salary did not permit her to stay on in the center. She left the center with the idea of maybe going back to school, getting her qualifications, her certification to own her own center. Well, I'm sorry to say, that didn't work. That didn't work, so we lost a good, high-quality worker, someone that our community really needed. I'm going to ask you that you move forward with this new and more comprehensive early childhood initiative, that you not throw out all the valuable ECE workers across the city that do this job on an everyday basis, most of them on half the salaries that the people that they are working for are getting. We have to make sure that they are properly invested in as we move forward. We must build as many efforts as we can into making sure that the minimum wage, or below minimum wage, or a little bit more than minimum wage that they're paid, gets bumped up. We must give them the tools they need to get the accreditation, to become more highly-qualified, because not only is it an investment in their lives, it is an investment in our children's lives. We must make sure that we don't throw the babies out with the backwater. And in this case, the babies I'm talking about is all the ECE workers who continue to work and struggle every day with their dirty diapers, trying to teach children to read, and continuing to do their jobs under sometimes not the best of circumstances. Make sure you consider this as you go for it and do the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Boy, these chairs are really short, or I am. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Carol Kalimnik. I'm a lifelong early childhood educator, a retired kindergarten teacher, a member of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, and co-founder of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. First, I want to thank city council members who are here. If you would please take this message back with you for not only providing funding for the school district, but saying that you are willing to withhold the money if they continue to outsource services. And I think that's a lesson that this commission needs to take, too, in terms of outsourcing services. There should have been universal pre-kindergarten years ago. Presently, monies are flowing from the federal government and hopefully soon from the state. It's this flood of money and how it's being used that concerns me. Let me start with an example of the outsourcing of early childhood programs from the school district. In 2013, Dr. Hyde proclaimed that the district would be outsourcing 2,000 Head Start slots. The announcement came on the heels of his plan to shutter over 20 years and was buried. Some valiant parents and Head Start staff appeared at school reform commission meetings to plead for their centers but were unsuccessful. The reason given for this privatization is cost. Certified teachers cost too much. District Head Start teachers are certified, members of the PFT who received benefits and participated when it existed, in the STEP system negotiated in the union contract. Certified teachers possess at least a bachelor's in early childhood education, many have master's degrees. There is stability within their ranks. Stability allows for the development of relationships between staff, students, and families. Stable relationships help young children flourish. The requirements for receiving these outsourced slots is for a program to hold either a three or four Keystone Star rating. When these slots were outsourced, some receiving centers were rated only a one or a two. Aspira, who owes the district over $3 million, wound up with 200 more slots, as did a private chain of daycare centers. I want to know, who is providing the oversight for the monitoring of these 2,000 slots? We already know the district is having enormous problems with charter school oversight. So who's ensuring that these young children are in developmentally appropriate settings with certified teachers? Out of the 17 people in this universal pre-K commission, I see no early childhood teachers. Their voices need to be heard. I sincerely hope that the 17 commissioners up there are aware that many will want a part of the money flowing into the city for universal pre-K. Many will have their hands out to grab that handful of coins. Please, be aware of the disaster created by the school district and outsourcing substitute teacher services to a private agency with no practical knowledge of the situation. Where are the early childhood voices that have the educational background, as well as the years of experience, to understand the complexities and nuances of caring for and educating our youngest children? Where are the voices that will push for developmentally appropriate practice? I really wish, instead of saying high-quality centers, it would be developmentally appropriate practice, which is so much better. Where are the voices to hold the monitors accountable for doing their job? I ask that you think about these questions and act to ensure that all universal pre-K programs are programs you would want your very own young child attending. One more question, I have lots of them. I know there's not time to answer them now, but I hope at one point you will, is, five people were appointed by city council and five people by the mayor. Who appointed the seven other people to the commission? So I hope that these questions can appear on the website or somewhere. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Carol. We have one more panel, but first I want to ask if Latoya Monron or Dr. Victoria Magnus are in the room? Okay, so we'll call our final panel, and then if time permits, anyone wants to come from the floor. But the names for the final panel members?
Okay, the next one, ready? It's Marvin Dutton. Is Marvin Dutton here? Okay. Latoya Monroe. Marvin Dutton is from Marvin's Education Services. Latoya Monroe is from Early Literacy Academy.
No, they're not here.
Oh, they're not here. I'm sorry. Okay. Beth Joseph from Early Childhood Environments. Beth here?
Yep.
Thank you, Beth. And Ron Seidman is from Charles. Was Ron here? We will begin with Marvin.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. The last one, huh? All right. My name is Marvin Dutton. I promised myself I wouldn't read from a piece of paper, so I'm going to read from the phone. I'm the CEO of Marvin's Education Services and former teacher of 10 years, and now a social entrepreneur. My company is now offering tutoring and school readiness classes to students in the poorest community in Philadelphia, which is Kensington. Dear commission, this is not an issue of funding, it's an issue of implementation. I ask that you don't throw money to the same organizations that have been failing our children. I know this as a kindergarten teacher. Your mere existence proves that these institutions have not succeeded. I ask that you focus on oversight and accountability, not money. I don't see any millennials on the commission. I don't know if that guy's a millennial. I ask that you engage new organizations, millennial organizations, those that are standing out, like myself, and the folks that are in the crowd, probably on Instagram right now. I ask that you provide equity to Black and Latino communities. According to the United States Bureau, 40% of children under the age of six are now living under the poverty line, which is outlined as 24,000 for a family of four. Forty percent, that's almost half. We know that the other half are not doing that much better. I look forward to engaging you moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Beth?
Yes. Good evening to the members of the Commission on Universal Pre-K. Beth Peretta-Joseph, I'm the founder and director of Early Childhood Environments. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify. With more than 25 years of experience in early childhood education, interior and playground design, the purpose for my testimony is to support the need to develop more high-quality, developmentally appropriate childcare facilities for all three- and four-year-olds. ECE is a minority-owned and operated company that provides expert consultation and in-depth analysis of interior space structure and cost. In addition to that, ECE also provides a bilingual preschool program for more than 70 kids in South Philadelphia. And as an owner-operator, I also know the struggle to get through the STAR system and also, over the years, having worked with many of you here, having to develop the STAR system. In less than four years, we've gone from licensing and have just submitted our paperwork for STAR III. We also have pre-K and Head Start. My reason for the testimony here is just having been through the entire system, helping to develop, and now as an operator and also providing design service, is just to support the commission and your efforts. And please use ECE and our expertise to help support you in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ryan here?
No, it's Ron Seidman. All right, if, is there anyone who wanted to bring testimony? We have about five minutes left. That doesn't mean you can use all five minutes.
No, I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Steve Honeyman, and I've been an organizational development consultant and a community organizer, having worked with Philadelphia for Early Childhood Education, DeVasi, Childspace, the Preschool Project, the Early Childhood Education Collaborative, Woodland Academy, and other nonprofits, and a number of foundations and statewide efforts. I was the first man to work at Temple University Daycare Center in 1973, and I've been a big proponent of early childhood education in my professional work and as a private citizen. The focus, you've heard it all already, so I'm not going to restate a lot of the things you've heard. The focus of my remarks will be on equity and quality throughout the Philadelphia neighborhoods and funding strategies for universal pre-K. In many ways, the city of Philadelphia needs its own costing-out study. Some of us were involved in a statewide costing-out study under Governor Rendell, where we really looked at need at school district to school district throughout the state of Pennsylvania. All of our neighborhoods are different, and if we don't take into consideration more than the studies that have been done already, which have mostly been, I would say, supply and demand studies, if we don't look at race, if we don't look at class, if we don't look at culture, we're not going to create a system that works. Because in the world outside of supply and demand, some cultures may be more inclined to have their children looked after by family or friends for reason of traditions and trust. Families might look to geographic convenience and extra benefits from a program or center as opposed to choosing quality. And then also, issues of transportation and work schedules might also impact. So I really believe that in order to make this work, they really need, and I don't want to prolong this another years and years, but there needs to be a quick study of each neighborhood, and not only what exists in the neighborhood, but as one of the last people said, also, there needs to be, needs to look at, are there programs in the neighborhood that are star-one or have no stars that we can figure out strategies to lift up? Because if all we do is choose programs in different parts of the city that have been getting the most resources traditionally and expand those programs, the system won't work, because people won't send their children to different parts of the city, in most cases. Also, the leadership of centers and programs should reflect the people of that community. There may be less of an inclination to send your children to the center or program with higher quality if there is a program or center that you can see yourself as a teacher or as a parent. So, and then finally, the funding formula piece is a tough one. And it really relates to the... And it really relates to the whole issue of, are we just creating universal pre-K? Or are we creating universal pre-K that connects to kindergarten and through third grade? The real definition, as some of you have taught me, of early childhood education, which goes to third grade. If we only create a universal pre-K program, it will not be successful because we won't be able to figure out how to transition the resources and learning to kindergarten and then through third grade. Now, it's a tough one, and you all, you all can't be all things to all people, but I think we can begin to ask some of these questions in a more challenging way. And then finally, the last thing is, in my opinion, there must be a contribution from the city regarding either a children's tax or a targeted contribution to universal pre-K if we're going to get political buy-in. Because what happens in the world of public education is we never quite have the political buy-in we need. And we get into this back and forth between the city and the state, who's responsible, and a lot of the people on city council are not even sending their children to public schools. So political buy-in is really important if we're going to make this work, which means money from the city. That's a targeted tax, not just a piece of the budget. And some, and some cities have done that. St. Louis has done it, San Francisco has done it, where they actually have a children's tax which goes to early childhood education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As we, as we begin to wrap up, I guess I wanted to make note that, to end the record, that the following people were not able to be present today, but submitted their written testimonies, and they are Damaris Avrato from Executive Director of Cookies Daycare Center, Erin Richburg, Instruction Specialist, Office of Early Childhood Education and School District of Philadelphia, Maria Hughes, Citizen, Michael Anada, Mayo City, Philadelphia, and Melissa Mary Bailey for Mayo Campaign.
And I want to thank, again, thank everyone for coming, to assure you that the commission will be really hard at work over the next couple of months. We have a very fast timeline. We have to deliver a preliminary report to council and ultimately to all of you by January. And so we hope that you'll come back and join us again on February 9th, when we'll be hearing comments about the plan. So you can follow the work of this commission on the website. Again, make sure that you submit any written testimony through the website, through the email address, and any questions, any follow-up information can also be submitted through that. Thank you all so much for coming and for the work that you do on behalf of children and families. Wow. We did it. Thank you. Thank you very much. 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 Thank you. Thank you very much.